Okay, good. Well, good morning, everybody. Is there a bird in here? Prove it. All right, I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, October 24th, 2023, here in Coachella. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very punchy group this morning. Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here. Hey, we got everybody. Good. Glad to see all the happy faces this morning. Are there any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, but we do have quite a few closed-session items, and we do have a rather lengthy discussion on the stormwater program. And I would have put my performance goal discussion on today, but I just didn't think there was enough time. So we'll start that next month.
It's on my calendar.
I have copies here.
Glad you're on time. Oh, you do?
Absolutely. I was gonna mail it out.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Perfect. All right, so is there anyone from the public wishing to comment at this time? Couple members of the public here? Nope. Hearing none?
And I'll just ask, if we have any members of the public on Zoom that would like to speak to general public comment, please use the raise hand feature at this time. And I don't see any at this time.
Consent calendar consists of items 5A through I. How I looked at all these.
Head move approval of the consent.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass by all. Yay. Okay, so on to this ordinance 7A regarding the air gap. Who's handling that? David? Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Purpose of this item is for the board to consider staff's recommendation to facilitate the flexibility as it relates to the location of the air gap for users on the Oasis project. Project is close to commissioning, users that are connected do have air gaps.
Oh.
Now you gotta start all over.
We heard you.
You're kidding, right?
The project is close to commissioning. As I mentioned, the users that are connected do have air gaps.
And I'm sorry, David, so because this is the Oasis project, is this something that for those four members who are recused would have a... Isn't this part of the overall Oasis project for actual connection?
We're actually considering an amendment to the rules and regs.
Okay.
And one of my questions was, is this a... Actually, a couple of them.
Is this a modification to the rules and regs going to apply to the entire system or just a specific area?
That's a good question.
Proposed language is intended to apply to Oasis.
Your mic again. You have to just leave it on, please.
Turn it on.
Turn it on.
Oh, no, don't touch that button, because you cut everybody off when you do that. I have...
It's gonna be no. Now I've gotta use that button.
That does, but the rest...
Can you hear me now?
Does it make sense to apply... And if it makes sense here, why doesn't it make sense everywhere? And maybe that solves the problem of Jeff's bringing up...
We've been focusing on all the focuses on Oasis, and we've been focusing on recusing those who have any impact on Oasis. I think it'd be safer than sorry not to have those who are recused.
Right.
Because they have a full...
Well, we can do that.
I can respond to the question first if that's helpful.
Okay.
So it's intended to be for Oasis, given the fact that we're trying to commission the project, and we think it's in the best interest of the organization and the users to allow the relocation of the air gap in a location that's different than a typical spot, which is right at the point of connection between public and private. We can investigate having this applied to the rest of the system. That would take a longer analysis, and for the purposes of the Oasis project, we don't really have the time, but we will entertain that if the board would like us to, and you give us some parameters as to what this is.
So David, I have a question. Can you show me... Can you read the portion of the ordinance that pertains to the location that the air gap has to be within a certain distance of the meter, or could it be anywhere on the property?
Yeah, I think that's the crux. It's not clear. It's been what we have enforced over the years. It's always at the point of connection, but the California Code of Regulations, which is Title 17, does highlight that the location is at the point of connection between public and private.
Can you read Title 17 of the California Code of Regulations?
I don't have it in front of me.
Well, how do you write ordinance that references the California Code of Regulations, and you don't have the California Code of Regulations with you?
If you'll bear with me, I can pull it up. That'd be helpful.
Once again, because this is directly impacting on Oasis, and because we've gone through the process of having to recuse those who have a financial interest and then re-qualify President Powell to be the third member, my legal advice would be to have those who are recused leave the diet, just to be sure we're not... Just be safer than sorry.
Mr. President, I would suggest that we consider the ordinance pertaining to the whole district and not just Oasis.
Okay, and I agree with that, but I think we have a problem with timing, so maybe we can do this in a stepwise approach, and Matt handle this part of it now.
So we can change the ordinance that's on our agenda. We can write the ordinance any...
No, I understand that, but we won't be able to get a staff analysis or recommendation on the rest of the district, because they haven't looked at it yet, is what David's saying.
I would like the opportunity to speak on that ordinance, so I would like the ordinance to be considered district-wide, and if the board elects to only have it pertain to the Oasis district, then at that point, you can kick me out.
Well, the matter that was brought for force today pertains only to the Oasis district, so I think we're stuck.
I don't think we're stuck, John.
May I read the language and the regulations?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Section 7603, "Air Gap Separation." "Air Gap Separation shall be located as closest practical to the user's connection and shall be..." And "All piping between the user's connection and the receiving tank shall be entirely visible unless otherwise approved and riding by the water supplier."
Yeah, so as practical, in certain instances, practical's gonna be a quarter mile away.
Right, and so to Mr. Powell's point, the item on the agenda refers to air gap requirements for the Oasis newly-recharged project. So under the Brown Act, if somebody wanted to apply that to everybody, they would only have read this to say, oh, well, today they're only talking about applying to Oasis. So if we wanted to expand the ordinance to apply to something beyond Oasis, that wasn't what was described on the agenda for somebody who may have...
You know, the item on the agenda, Jeff, is the ordinance, and the board has full authority to wordsmith an ordinance in public session, in front of everyone, to, you know, a final solution. I'm not understanding at all this Oasis exception that you're claiming. Now that the project's approved, it's been in place, there are people already connected, and so this is not a conflict for directors personally. I mean, it's for the general public exception within that now new program. I mean, what you would be suggesting is that somehow the directors don't... There's not a public exception within that group now, and I don't understand it. There's no financial interest here to be considered.
So your first question is, if you had an ordinance that said we're gonna increase... We're gonna have an air gap policy for the eastern part of the district, and that's what the ordinance on the agenda said. Somebody in the western part would say, I don't need to go to that meeting, because it doesn't apply to me. But if at this meeting you say, okay, we're gonna apply that ordinance throughout the entire valley, that's fine, but that's not what the agenda says. So somebody in the west who didn't show up because they didn't think it applied to them, you'd be taking action today to make it apply to them. That's the Brown Act issue. In terms of the conflict...
Well, no one from the west would have been affected by that, so...
That's my only basic concern, and if your judgment is that it's been approved, the Oasis project, the funding's been approved, we're moving forward, this is to implement the connections, that's certainly your judgment. My legal opinion would be, because we've been so clear about the dividing line, it'd be... My legal advice would be to continue that just throughout the completion of the Oasis project.
I'd just say that I probably, based on the conversation I'm hearing, I'm probably not ready to vote on this. I think I'd like to see your analysis on what it would mean for the system as a whole.
Well, okay, so my concern is that... I don't know why they brought such a narrow item.
We've explained that, because there's a time issue.
Because of... Well...
Yeah, if I may, the hydraulic complexities of the rest of the system are different in Oasis, and it just requires more...
So it's my understanding that we're not gonna be online until the first of the year, so why can't we go ahead and take care of this on the...
Next meeting.
On the next meeting.
Well, there's a difference of opinion on when it's gonna come online. I have been saying the first of the year, because there are always things that we're not gonna be able to control. Staff is of the opinion that it could be online as early as November 15. And that's... They continue to tell me that, and I continue to say in disbelief, I'll know it when I see it, but you always underpromise and over-deliver. In this particular case, it was my advice to publicize a later date to ensure that we actually could perform by that date and not jeopardize crops in the field or other implications. But staff is... Staff truly believes that November 15. Now, we are waiting on IID to do some work. We don't control that work, but, you know, it is what it is.
Well, I mean, there's been just a long list of reasons why this thing has been delayed for more than a year now.
We did recently send out a letter, though, with an update, saying that we believe water will be available by November... The week of November 27th, so...
After Thanksgiving.
We are trying to address this issue today, and we are happy to bring it back to address the whole system in the next...
In two weeks.
In two weeks, if you'd like.
Yeah, so let's say that we handle this matter today as an Oasis matter. If we approve it, is there anything in that action that would prevent or bias or prejudice that taking that more global action at the next meeting?
No, no.
I mean, I just don't want to keep delaying this thing. I wish it had been handled different, but it wasn't, and so now here we are.
Well, John, all I know is that the ordinance has been used to limit the ability to put facilities in. When I look at... For agricultural purposes, when I look at backflow preventers across the domestic system, I can find literally thousands of backflow preventers that are doing the job to keep contaminants from the CDWD system, just thousands of them.
And they're not air gaps?
And they're not air gaps. And to come with an ordinance that states... That specifically states in the staff uses to limit the equipment that agricultural users might be wanting to install, to me, is there's no equity in that. And I see these thousands of backflow preventers across the domestic system and wonder, why can't we put those in our agricultural systems? Where you have... You can even put in place an inspection program. I mean, I know that's a concern. Quagga's are a concern, and if you put an inspection program in and you put an approval process in, it seems to me that any kind of other backflow prevention device is just as good as what we use in the domestic side of the system.
So I agree with that. We have a seven-year-old system. We have equipment on the system that isn't working, meaning there are check valves that aren't working. Installing check valves also...
Dan, you're talking about the irrigation system right now.
Yeah, the irrigation. I'm not getting into Oasis, but I'm just saying that I agree with Kerry. We can look at this. We protect the system. We try to make sure reservoirs can't come back on us, but we can pilot. We can look at that differently. But the intent of today is, is we're trying to give them authorization to do something differently in the benefit of the customer and our system, and the need is right now, too, for these existing 43 meters, from my understanding, which 10 are already connected. So we just want to clean up the regulations for this specific need at this point in time, and we can bring that back. We can look at piloting. We can look at whatever we gotta do differently for the rest of the system.
Yeah, which I think is... I mean, I think it's totally... I don't understand where the district's coming from, because David read the California Code, Title 177603, that says that the connection should be as close as practical to the public system, and practical might be a quarter mile away in certain instances. So your whole thinking about this ordinance is just driving me batty, because I have a real sense that the district wants to just push back against anything that might be a little bit different, but that would be perfectly acceptable in all realms of irrigation and water management.
We've looked at check valves and other backflow preventers. We are not against it. I think we are a little different than other systems in the state with the amount of sediment in the Colorado, but we're willing to explore... I mean, the board directs the rules and regs, and we're willing to explore that. It's just a timing issue on one versus the other. The air gap at the public... The separation between public and private has been a standard practice, and we're just trying to clean up the language to allow the existing connections for this existing need to move and be very clear about it. I understand it's not... It's kind of gray right now on where the air vac needs to be.
I don't see it gray at all. It's just as close as practical.
Practical for who, though? It's gray. We're just trying to clarify that allowing it over there is a good thing.
The proposed language doesn't exactly make you feel warm and fuzzy either, because it says, "A variance design shall be submitted to CBWD subject to review and approval," so you're still stuck. There's no design criteria here. It's just basically saying, whatever they say, you submit it, and we might approve it, we might not.
Well, let's not look at staff as being diabolical here or evil. I think our responsibility is to protect it. This is our recommendation.
Anything but an air gap, Jim. I don't think that's...
It's your personal opinion, sir. I'm speaking on behalf of staff and the recommendations they're putting forward. I don't know what your personal concerns are.
I'm just saying, if you wanted to feel better about it, maybe we try to come up with some acceptable design criteria instead of just saying, you know...
I'm perfectly fine with that.
Because that's... This is wide open. It doesn't really say anything.
And, you know, we do have existing situations like the non-public water system. We built that, where the air gap isn't at the separation between public and private, the air gap is at the lake. And so the proposed language was the intent of kind of mirroring that, meaning it's a benefit for the customer to be able to put that air vac at the lake, rather than trying to manage it at a location that could have hydraulic or gravity situations at the separation between public and private. So this was meant to be positive overall, but I understand there's a more global concern that needs to be addressed, and we're willing to do a pilot or revise language as deemed appropriate by the board.
So without this revision to the ordinance, we wouldn't be in a position to do exactly what we're trying to do at Oasis? Because it seems to me like we don't have a standard, and it goes through the review process, so what are you getting that you don't have?
Well, you know, in hindsight, it would have been nice to have this conversation before people were connected, but we're connected now. It's my understanding that everybody connected already has an air gap, so allowing them the air gap at the reservoir served our purpose, meaning protects us from quagga, protects us from chemicals, but it also, you know, cleans up the language for them as well, meaning, hey, it's okay to have an air gap at your reservoir rather than at the location of public to private. And even though that might not have been black and white in the rules and regs, that was our interpretation. So it's just trying to clean up language for the benefit of the customer, but longer term, I agree with Director Nelson that we should use a postage stamp approach, even though gravity versus pump are two different, you know, aspects of it.
Would you say that, so without this revision, in general, you would have denied putting the air gap at the reservoir?
Look, I was involved in 2014. The intent was always that we were gonna get it to the low point of the property. They would put a reservoir there, and they would pump to the high point, and then they would gravity off that. We're coming off that to the benefit of the customer, and I think that's a huge step. It might not be the only step to make sure that you guys... You guys determine the rules.
No, I do read it as it being more flexible.
That was the intent.
This is not a big deal. We should just, instead of delaying this thing, you and I, and I agree with everything that you're saying, Peter, everything, we should just leave the room, let them vote, get this thing over with, and then come back in two weeks and see if we can get this thing so it's a rules and regulations for the whole system. And maybe clean up their language a little bit, like you're saying, to make it a little bit more so that black and white, instead of giving all the flexibility to staff.
So I think the board's given staff direction that what you would like to see, and so now, if you can recuse, then any further questions on a particular Oasis, and then you take a vote, come back in two weeks with a game plan.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and maybe we could even... Some of us could provide some language that maybe they can put in in two weeks. Fairness, okay. Thanks. I haven't seen this yet. All right, so now we have the Oasis board constituted for the purpose of considering this one item, right?
So if there are any other particular questions on the Oasis connection for the Vice President?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's what we're gonna do, is gonna hash this out. I'm... You know, I just heard that you already have the connections, that you say, like, 14 or 15 or how many connections?
10.
Connections, and they've already put in the air gap?
Yeah.
So are you anticipating more connections within the next few weeks? That this can't wait until next meeting, or what are we gaining from doing this now?
It will allow us, if we commission next month, that we will be able to deliver to the users that are connected.
And anybody that connects before we get this resolved.
I want to just clarify something. So the way we read the rules and regs currently is that the air gap would have to be at the connection, where the meter is at. Currently, most of the connections, the air gap is hundreds of feet away from that connection that are at the reservoir. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that we're in compliance with the rules and regs to allow that, because it's already basically in existence.
I mean, are you talking about 8-5.1? This is the part of the deal that we're...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
I mean, I don't see anything in there that says where it should be located. It just says per the California Code of Regulation.
Which sounds like it allows you some flexibility.
It shall be at least double the diameter and, you know, at least one inch from separation and...
Right, and so we're trying to make it clear that it can be located further away.
But it really doesn't say anything about location. So then you go to the language in the Code of Regulation, and it says, "As close as practical."
Which is kind of like, again, you know...
Which could be a quarter mile.
It could be, but is that practical for the customer or practical for the district?
Doesn't say.
So that's why we... That's the whole purpose here.
So there's room for improvement here?
Yeah.
But approving this today at least keeps us on track.
It keeps us on track, and it keeps the connections that are there, we can say they're per the rules and regs, from a staff perspective.
And then without a change to... Without a change that would capture the rest of the service area, this right now would only apply to the Oasis project.
Correct.
And so everything else outside of that would remain...
Correct. This applies to new connections.
Right.
And that's... So that was the other thing, is when we get into, yes, new connections, but only new connections in Oasis.
Correct.
This doesn't resolve new connections outside Oasis.
Right, but that doesn't seem to be an issue right now.
Apparently it is for somebody.
And you say that because you're not getting a lot of new connections?
I've not heard that there have... I've not heard of any new connections outside of the Oasis area with this issue.
But you wouldn't be opposed to just rolling it into the entire service area so that it's all new connections regardless of...
Well, we want to have an opportunity to look at that, because that wasn't the request, and that hasn't been the discussion.
No.
And then Director Nelson has brought up the usage of these backflow preventers, which is something we've never looked at for the irrigation system, per se, because it's different than our domestic water system.
There's more sedimentation, the check valves, backflow preventers came in.
Like Dan was saying, we want the opportunity to look at that. We may even want the opportunity to try to pilot using a backflow preventer with the... You know, so it's a little more complicated on the larger system.
I'll say one more thing, and then I'll stop. I do want the Oasis project to become active, go online sooner than later, but I would also want for us to do as much as possible to have one regulation that applies to the entire service area and not end up in a situation where we have different rules somewhere and different rules somewhere else. So to the extent that we need to do those studies and analyze all those things so that we can get one final regulation put in place, that's what I would recommend.
Okay, and if we... If I could just respectfully ask for a little more than two weeks, I would appreciate that.
So, yeah, I mean, our meeting calendar...
We have two in November now.
We do have two in November, so that's a fortunate...
But we have a holiday in there, too.
There's, like Sylvia pointed out, there's noticing requirements. We have to notice something in the newspaper. I think it's at least 10 days before the meeting.
Well, can you do it by the November 28th? I mean, that's more than a month away.
Yes.
Instead of... I mean, it's either the 14th or the 28th, so...
And because this is not an item to... On the agenda for that, that was just general direction from the board. So if the general direction from this board of the three of you is come back on the 28th, that's all you need. You don't... It's not a formal vote to do that.
Right, I understand. I mean, come back on the 14th if you can, but I don't know what the urgency is on that other question.
I don't either. I think you could have more time. I think just with the goal of trying to wrap it all together.
Right, okay.
If you need more time, I don't see... I don't see, you know, a month, two months being a big issue.
The thing with our internal schedule is that basically by next Tuesday, we'd have to have the item to Sylvia, so we really would only have a week. So if we can do it on the 28th, then that gives us a few more weeks because of the way the board items when they're due.
Right.
And then if at that point you have an update, say, hey, this is what we're facing, or this is the obstacle we have, or we need to do further research, at least that's a notification to the board that you're getting in that direction, going in that direction.
I mean, you know, to me, it seems like you may want to put some examples into the ordinance of what is acceptable that's different than what we've been doing in the past.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I don't know if you've seen this...
No.
Director Nelson's thing. First, I've seen it, but he's pushing for the...
Check valve.
Check valves, yeah. Backflow prevention apparatus.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, there's a question there. Is that... So I mean, I, you know, there's a question there of, is that something that might or might not be acceptable? I have no...
Right, so it sounds like it's two issues. It's, it's not just the air gap and having that applied to the whole system, but it's also potentially allowing something other than an air gap like a backflow preventer, so...
I can send it to you electronically.
Yeah, I agree, and I think, I think you're going to come back with an answer of, yeah, it would work or no, it wouldn't work.
Yeah, I mean, this is only really addressing the location of the air gap for, for the new customers in the Oasis area, so...
Right, right.
Pretty narrow.
Right.
All right, so you're clear where we are on this?
Yes.
John, I have some questions. So if, if this comes back to us in the future, do we have an issue of recusal at that point? Or is that just applicable to...
That would be a universal application of a change in the rules and regulations. So no, that would not be a conflict of interest issue. This, this has to do with directly Oasis, new customers for Oasis and that we're dealing with all other new customer for Oasis issues in this format.
Okay, I, I understand. So I would move approval of the ordinance.
In a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. What did you say, the twenty...
Eight.
No, 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 for the project to be going?
The week of the twenty seventh.
Week of the twenty seventh. I'm keeping track of these, so we only shifted a week or two.
So you plan to turn on a valve on, open up a gate or something?
Yep.
Yeah, we're beginning the process, the beginning, commissioning process, the beginning of the month.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. If we can just do regular vote.
Actually, this is an ordinance meeting.
Or, or roll call, uh, roll call vote, please.
Senator Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
And Director Aguilera?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, so that passed three oh. Thank you.
Moving on.
Go get those guys. I'm leaving soon, too. Onto B, eight B, or eight A.
All right, the purpose of this, the purpose of this item is to authorize the General Manager to execute change order number one with, to the emergency contract with Mamco Incorporated doing business as Alabasi in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars to complete the emergency repairs on the canal. When we first approached this project, we planned to do, we install coffer dams within the canal that allow us to displace the flow and keep the canal operating while we're doing the work. In this particular reach, we lost sight of the fact that there's a weir inside this location near Siphon Seven that precludes our ability to lower the water enough with the coffer dams that we had originally planned to use that are only about five feet high. So we have a taller coffer dam, it's about twelve feet high, that we are asking the contractor to use to do this work. It requires that they put it together, that they transport it from Mecca. It's about twenty-five tons and it requires a cane, a crane.
Is this something that, are we getting any funding for storm damage? Is it, what is that process? Surely there's some kind of emergency funding for that?
Yeah, this, this damage is part of the, part of the storm declaration and we're keeping track of the costs.
Okay, so in case there are funds that it could potentially reimburse this. Is there a motion to approve eight A?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Fair enough, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passed five oh. Thanks, David. All right, are you on for the next one? Oh, this is one I need to leave the room. Eight B, you're on.
So just for the record, Director Powell will be leaving the room to recuse himself on a potential conflict of interest due to a real property interest in proximity to the project that's being considered now.
Okay, go ahead, David.
All right, the purpose of this item is to approve solicitation of bids for the construction of the improvements to Irrigation Lower One Twenty-three Forty-five, One Three Two Two. Project is about a half a mile worth of twenty-four inch diameter pipeline. It includes high line work to keep the customers in service while we're, while we're doing the work and it is included in this year's fiscal capital improvement budget. We would like to advertise for bids to construct.
Any questions from board members? I just have one quick question. Is this part of the schedule for that...
Bill funding?
The reclamation grant that we have?
Yes, long.
And, and this is what project out of that list? Because I think we have, how many projects do we have in that? Like twenty?
Yeah, there were, there's ten, there's eleven projects.
And, and how many have we completed so far?
We're working on the midcanal right now and then this would be the second one.
Okay.
And Phase One of, of one of the projects.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, so onto eight C.
Good morning.
Hey, hi, Armando.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Powell, members of board, audience, fellow staff. My name for the record is Armando Rodriguez with the Engineering Department. We currently seeking approval to execute tax order one for right-of-way services under our PSA agreement that we currently have with Clark Land and Resources for a total amount of sixty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. This is to help us with some acquisition of right-of-way that is required at fifty-five twelve. We're also seeking additional soft cost and for title of about five thousand dollars and then right-of-way contingency of twelve thousand for a total ask of eighty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. We are currently are trying to do a sewer rehabilitation of our odor scrubbing. That is the equipment that we use to make sure we take care of odors within lift station fifty-five twelve and also eighty-one oh seven. During the design, we found out that we don't have wastewater rights to this lift station at fifty-five twelve. In actuality, what we do have when we build it was a storm, stormwater easement. So the Home Depot site goes all the way to, to the bottom of the toe. And so right now, we have to get some easements or, what we prefer is actually to acquire fee title so that we can have full ability to, to have control of this area. And so not only are we trying to acquire the fee title for the lift station site, but then also for the storm drain improvement. So if we can project the frontage of the back of the Home Depot, and I think there's an exhibit, attachment D?
Property map?
Can you pull up Attachment D, please, on the screen?
Which will show us a better... I'm sorry, I didn't think I was going to take this. Thank you for your patience.
Attachment two, I think, right?
Attachment, can we go to attachment?
Property map.
Property map?
Uh, Attachment five?
Attachment five?
Please.
I think it's this one. I'm on the edge of my seat here.
If not, I can, I can verbalize what we're trying to do.
There you go, is that the one?
That's the one, if you can just scroll so we can see more at the bottom. So currently now, the Home Depot owns all the way to the bottom of the channel. And so what we like to do not only is to acquire the rights of the lift station side of fifty-five twelve, but also within the storm drain bank bed as well. And we would like to secure those access, access rights in addition to not only that fee title, but currently now, we don't have an ability to go into our lift station fifty-five twelve that is an easement access. So we would like to also come clean and say we would like to have an access right. So that's what is shown here in blue. And in addition to doing this third step is to, we have to have a little bit of coordination with SEVAG because they have acquired an exclusive easement throughout this area. So those are the three prongs approach in regards to our acquisition task core that we have now. It's a little on the high side, but it's a little complicated that, and all the steps that we're trying to do. With that, I'll close and open up for any questions you might have.
Are we sure that SEVAG is going to give us that, grant us that easement?
You know, we have looked at their civil plans and we have plotted those civil plans here. Those, we, we are not in conflict with their plan, with our, not only our storm drain, but also our lift station. And so we don't anticipate there to be a conflict. But definitely has to be close coordination and collaboration and we do have to do that request. But we don't anticipate a concern.
All seems reasonable to me, I'd, I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passed five oh. Thanks, Armando.
Thank you, Armando.
Written communications, we had one item included on the agenda, which looks like it's in, not, not unresolved. We have our big stormwater presentation, correct?
Where are the trumpeters?
There's a lot there.
I recognize there's a lot here and I'll try to maintain a solid pace. Most of you all have seen some version of this.
We've seen a lot of it, yeah, it's pretty familiar, but yeah, getting a good update of where we are now.
So the goal of this presentation is to just try to stay relatively high level, talk about what our public purpose is, where we've been, what we're doing now and what we plan to do going forward. So let's start with a little bit of the history. The Coachella Valley Stormwater District was formed in nineteen fifteen and it was formed to address regional flooding or floods from a regional perspective. And it was in recognition of the fact that the, the watershed boundaries didn't necessarily align with the, with the city boundaries. And so a regional agency would, was formed to address that. The local, or the cities would, would address local drainage. And so that was the purview for the Stormwater District as it formed in nineteen fifteen. It merged with the Coachella Valley County Water District in nineteen thirty-seven. Some notable flooding in the valley. The big one was in September of nineteen thirty-nine, we had a record storm in the city of Indio, it was about six and a half inches in six hours. There was other storms that occurred between thirty-nine and seventy-six, but kind of the impetus for a lot of construction that went on in, in the eighties is a consequence of the storms that took place in the seventies. And we had quite a few storms that took place. We had Hurricane Kathleen in Palm Desert in seventy-six, Hurricane Dorine in Thousand Palms in seventy-seven. Seventy-eight, we actually had a hurricane came through and hit the Mission Creek area, it's not showing on here. In seventy-nine, we had Hurricane Dolores in Ratchamirage. Those were the three big drivers for some of the improvements I'm going to touch on here shortly. We also had, September twenty fourteen was one of our larger storms that we had in the city of La Quinta, Thousand Palms. February of twenty nineteen, we had a decent storm that sent twenty-two thousand cubic feet per second into the storm channel. The channel is sized for thirty-nine thousand CFS, so that's just over half of, of that capacity. And then we had, of course, the last two storms, which were, which were one of the largest ones we had on record with a thousand year coming out of Morongo and then in the east side, Nuremberg and Oasis.
How many CFSs did we get on the Hillary? Less than twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, we had, it was closer to, it was, I think it was, I think it was about twenty thousand, it's about the same in the channel.
Okay.
Yes. So these are the list of the projects that were constructed. I'm going to go through them as a, as a consequence of the storms we had in the seventies. The first one here was the Ratchamirage Flood Control System. Again, these were all constructed in the, in the early to mid eighties. This system consists of approximately seven different storm channels, some debris basins, open channel and storm drain pipeline that comes through the, through the city right in there and then drains into the Whitewater River. This one addresses about a, it's about a nineteen square mile watershed, I'm sorry, nine square mile watershed. Then we have the Palm Valley Storm Channel. This one addresses about a nineteen square mile watershed. This is about five miles, it runs roughly parallel to Highway seventy-four. It has a levee up near the top, which is at the bottom of the screen here, and a debris basin, a couple of debris basins, and then an open rectangular channel that takes the storm flows all the way out through the, through the city of Palm Desert into the Whitewater River. We also have the Deep Canyon Stormwater System. Most of this was constructed in the eighties. We do have the reservoir, or I'm sorry, the reserve community, which is up near the bottom of the screen, which is here, they were constructed in the nineties. And this system is about seven miles. It captures the flood hazards from about a fifty-four square mile watershed. It consists of various training dikes, debris basins, open channels. And there's also, we do have what's called Dead Indian Creek, which drains through Big Horn Canyon. And we have a flood easement through here, which ends up going through Ironwood and confluences at, at the channel here into the rest of the Deep Canyon Stormwater Channel. And then we have the La Quinta Storm System. The La Quinta System is approximately eight miles if you count for the evacuation channel, which takes it to the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel near Jefferson Street, right near Home Depot. This is, consists of multiple debris basin, open trapezoidal channels, levees, storm drain and the Oleander Reservoir, which is up near PJ West, the mountain course there. That, that reservoir was constructed to attenuate the flows going into the La Quinta evacuation channel. In about two thousand thirteen, we took, we started to develop master planning efforts to address more regional flooding, take a look at it from more of a holistic approach and to help us prioritize and, and to be able to communicate better to developers who are looking to develop in some of these, in some of these regions. So this is a slide that I think you've all seen, but it's meant to show the different watersheds. These are the watersheds that were already addressed. The ones on the, on the left of the screen here are the ones we just spoke about. And the ones on the right were, were addressed by way of the construction of the east side dike, which was constructed as part of the protective works for the Coachella Canal by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. This is just listing more of those. As part of the protective works, also, we have three wasteways, wastewater one, two, and three that were constructed by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation that were meant to relieve some of the flows that are behind the dike and send them out into the Salt and Sea, in the case wastewater one. Wasteway two and three drain to the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel. We have the Morongo Wash Watershed, that's about a two hundred square mile watershed. That's the one that delivered to the freeway about a couple of months ago. And we have the Thousand Palms Watershed, which is a little over a hundred square miles. And then we have the North Indio Watershed, which is also a little over a hundred square miles. And we did some studies for the Mecca North Shore Watershed and the Oasis Area Watershed, as well as the west shores of the Salt and Sea. So as a result of our master planning efforts, obviously those took some time to put together and to, and to recognize that the solution to addressing some of these hazards required that we combine the approach to addressing multiple watersheds. The projects that we prioritized to construct, we have two that were completed, the film irrigation ditch in sixty-two through sixty-two... in 62 through 64, channel slope protection. And then we have the three that are currently under construction, and I'll go into those. So this is the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel, the improvements between Avenue 54 and Thermal Drop, which is right near Avenue 58. This right here shows the flood hazards associated with the fact that the channel did not have the capacity to convey the 100-year flood. There's a constriction right here where the, there's a construction at the Avenue 56 Bridge, and then one right here where there's an S curve or reverse curve, where we have the Union Pacific Railroad and Highway 111. When we had the storm in 2019, when we had 22,000 CFS, we were about two feet from the bottom of that bridge. And so if we had the 39,000 CFS, this is what we would expect the flood hazard to be. So this is the project that is currently under construction. This project is planned to be completed by the end of this calendar year. And what we, what we have done here is we have aligned a portion of the channels you see here and lowered it to, and changed the section, the cross section, to increase the velocities and drop the water surface elevation and allow us to get these flows underneath these, these various constriction locations. We also lined a portion of the slopes on the upstream end and made improvements to the drop structure on the downstream end. This, these are the current, excuse me, these are the current flood hazards in North Indio. Excuse me. On the left-hand side, you have Sun City Palm Desert. Sun City Palm Desert was conditioned as part of its development to receive the flood hazards coming off the west side from Thousand Palms. You'll see, I think I have a better picture here, but you'll see a couple of channels coming through here and coming up along here. And the requirement for Sun City Palm Desert, or any development that constructs within a floodplain, is that they need to receive the existing flood hazards that are coming onto their property, and then they must release them in a fashion that's consistent with historic flooding patterns, which is what they did here. And then you have down here, Sun City Shadow Hills, which had the same conditions, and they built storm channels in here that they also doubled as a golf course. That's intended to receive the flows, thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
That's intended to receive the flows from, from North Indio Flood Control Project.
You really deliver the water.
Build the pipes.
This is the North Indio Flood Control Project. It's currently under construction now. It's about roughly two miles. It consists about eight street crossings, various cross sections, rectangular, trapezoidal. And this connects the channels within Sun City Palm Desert to the existing channel within Sun City Shadow Hills. This project is expected to be completed in the fall of next calendar year. East Side Dyke Improvement Project. The East Side Dyke, we've always known, provides a physical obstruction to the flood hazards from the North Indio Watershed. However, FEMA does not recognize it as a flood protection facility. And so this project was to align or, or get the project aligned with FEMA standards so that the folks that are downstream, specifically Talavera, would not have to continue to pay flood insurance as a consequence of any mortgages that they have that are backed by the federal government. The construction for this work is completed. It required raising the dike in a couple of areas and putting scour protection on the upstream side. We're currently working with FEMA to process the letter of map revision, which is the final element, the administrative element, to allow them to remap the area and remove the statutory requirement for flood insurance. We expect that to begin, to be, the lomar to be final by the end of this calendar year.
So just go back to that a little bit. So just the residents of Talavera or that, the whole area of residents that are below that dike will benefit from that?
The whole, the whole area will benefit from it.
Okay, so everywhere where I see the east side dike, everything below it will benefit?
That's correct.
Okay.
The way the mapping currently is right now with, with FEMA, only portions of the community actually are technically mapped, but we know that the flood hazard exists.
David?
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason why that dike doesn't stretch more to the south? What, is there a reason why it ends there?
The dike was built by the Bureau. It was finished in 49. The canal, it was meant to protect farmland. That was in the area, and that's just as far as they, as they took it. The Sun City, the Sun City Palm Desert community does address flows that come near the top. You can see in this picture here, they have a channel here near, I think that's Francis Way. I think they changed name, but that comes out here, and there's a small berm that does direct flows back behind it, behind the dike.
So in your opinion or your experience, addressing properties that are south of that, at the end of that dike, would, is there a possibility, have you seen anything that suggests that we would, that the district would extend that dike more to the south to protect?
No, the flood hazards there are small. We do have some development looking, some, some folks looking to develop in the area, and they would have to address some, some minor flood hazards coming onto that property.
Out of, out of the mountains?
Yes.
Okay. And then would those then translate to like open channels, the same way that were built in all the other examples that you showed in Rancho Mirage and La Quinta that, that eventually gets that flow into the storm channel? Would those be considered reachable facilities?
Yeah, for those, like I said, those flows are relatively small. Most of those folks would be retaining it on site. In some cases, they may be able to direct them. There's a, there's a development further up here where they would be directing it behind the dike.
Where, so the flows that come at, to the end of that dike, where do they go right now?
Where do they go? They stay behind the dike. There's a, there's a wastewater, wastewater three, which is near, which is here, where some of the flows can exit through there. This is sized for 3,000 CFS. But in general, these are, these were deemed when the Bureau built a detention dikes, and they're meant to detain all the water behind it.
And just stay there and percolate or evaporate or?
And those are on the, on the north side of the canal?
Yes.
And does that happen? Do we get detained water back there for periods of time?
Yeah, we do. I don't know that I've seen much over here. You can see here where the water has bonded up.
I would assume it just, it just flows out of there, doesn't it, into?
It flows to wherever the high and low points is.
Well, that's my, that's my point about the end of the dike is when it reaches the end of the dike from the south end, is there a place for it to go, or does it get off?
It's all contained. It's, we're not directing the flow down that way, if that's, if that's what your question is. It reaches another high point that keeps it contained.
You have another berm there or something?
Well, it just reaches the natural topography.
Is that Interstate 10 right there? I mean, is that where?
This is here, yes.
Yeah, but where it ends is Interstate 10.
Yes, yes. So the east side dike continues on past here on the other side of 10, which we'll, we'll talk about one of the other slides.
And that, and that's just dirt. That's just, right?
It's like a big berm.
It's dirt, yes.
It's just a big berm. And don't we have the same size big berm in Mecca on?
Fox Canyon.
On Fox Canyon?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so it's the same kind of dike? It's just?
It's effectively the same dike, yes.
It's technically the same dike. It's just there's an area between where the 10 is to that area that doesn't have that huge?
Yes, and if you, if you drive out here, you might just take a look. You'll see you're, you're kind of at grade at this location. So water doesn't, isn't wanting to come, come this, this direction. So this area, that's where the separation is. So there's no need to convey anything under the 10 at that spot?
So I think we are working on trying to get the, that dike certified?
Yes, and that'll be one of the slides.
That'll be one of the slides, okay.
Yes, sir. Okay, these are the projects that were constructed already. This was to improve or to provide protection to Warp 4. This is a series of berms on the north and west side, and improvement to the channel on the south side, and slope protection along the east side of the warp. These improvements have been completed. Here's a list of the next set of priority projects that we have planned for. I'll go through each one of these as well. This is the North Cathedral City.
David, I'm sorry to interrupt. So I had a question before you begin. So do these all have like equal parity on priority, or is there an assignment of, you know, the, we're working on this one 80% of the time? I mean, how do you determine what, what is, what is the priority?
Well, urbanized areas are, have been the priority in terms of, in terms of selecting where to focus our efforts. We've been working on North Cathedral City, Thousand Palms, and the Thousand Palms Channel, East Side Dyke concurrently in terms of developing plans for these. These projects take quite a bit of time to develop. There's a lot of regulatory components. You have to deal, you have to get permitting with the Army Corps of Engineers for 401 or 404, 401 permit with Regional Water Quality Control Board, and you've got to go through CDFW. The Thousand Palms Project, which we'll touch on, has 83 ephemeral streams, streams that we'll have to get permits for with CDFW. So the permitting is a real, real problem. So we've been trying to develop these, these projects concurrently and then look to where there's, there's funding available to help get them out. And there's a handful of these that we have, we, we still need to start developing, which we'll touch on here shortly. Again, this is North Cathedral City Regional Flood Control Project. These are the flood hazards coming out of the Morongo Basin, which is the 200 square mile watershed that I touched on earlier. The flood hazards coming out of that basin are about 36,500 CFS. You can see, this is, these are showing the flood depths related to the 100-year flood. You can see that the footprint of this matches pretty closely to what happened with Hillary. And that was the thousand-year storm. So this is, this is, we, we just modeled a 100-year storm and we addressed the, the 100-year storm. But it does give us a high level of comfort that the modeling that we do is, is pretty close to form. It was nice, if you can see, have a silver lining to what happened. It was nice to see that at least. This project is intended to capture roughly about half of the flows that run along Interstate 10 through a lined channel. There's an existing bridge under the Union Pacific Railroad that would capture those flows and bring them into the Whitewater River. And that's what this project is here.
So David, with that damage that was done to the railroad into Interstate 10, I mean, is there any funding that might be available? I don't know, from, you know, interstate highway funding or railroads, you know, I mean?
Buttigieg.
I know, yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know how that works, but it just seems like those are in play and we're, we're not necessarily collecting any tax or rate revenues from those entities, and yet they're, we're, we're protecting them, you know? So, I mean, how do they pay?
Well, the, that's a good question. The, we have a Phase 2 component with this, where we've already been in touch with Caltrans to help handle the Phase 2, which would remove all the flows that you see, or would be planned to remove, all the flows that you see running along the north side. For this particular project, which is effectively a Phase 1, the Phase 2 is expensive. It requires widening of the existing bridges. It's many years out. It's not even, we haven't even come up with a design, just a, just a preliminary estimate on what we would do to, to make it happen. We'd have to coordinate with Caltrans on that. And they did signal that they would support a monetary arm, if you will, effort on their end for that. And that was a few years ago when we met. We are actively looking for federal funding right now for the, for this particular project. We have not engaged with Caltrans to see if there's any, any particular funding, but it's not a bad idea. And, and I think we can look into that to see if they have anything coming.
It's easy to make the case now that this, these works protect them.
For sure. And they're actually, they're out there right now cleaning, cleaning a lot of that area up.
Yeah.
Okay. Thousand Palms Flood Control Project. These are the flood hazards coming out of Thousand Palms. And we kept this on the slide, but this is, these are also the flood hazards that come from Morongo that were running along Interstate 10. So they come all the way down here, and they did come all the way down here during the last storm that we had. But what I was trying to show here is that this is just another example of how the flood hazards are interconnected and why a regional approach needs to be taken when we look at these things. So the Thousand Palms Flood Control Project will address these flows, but it still doesn't address these flows. So these flood hazards will still exist once we complete the Thousand Palms Flood Control Project until we complete the second half of the North Cathedral City Project. A portion of these flows will still exist.
Hey David, I'm going to assume that the 39,000 CFS of the Whitewater Channel capacity, that these flows flowing into that is a part of that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
There's a, there's a timing component. You wouldn't expect a rain to happen all over the valley. We'd have bigger problems, but.
Right.
This is the footprint of the Thousand Palms Flood Control Project, a series of dikes that train the water down to the west, go through the existing Classic Club storm channels. Classic Club is also conditioned to receive the offsite flows and convey them through their property and release them consistent with historic flooding patterns, which they did. And then we plan to tie into their existing channels. And there's an open channel running on the south side of Avenue 38, where there would be, we would construct an open channel on the south side of Avenue 38 that would discharge into the existing storm channels with Sun City Palm Desert. And as you can see here on Sun City Palm Desert, the alluvial fan here tends to go back and forth. So Sun City Palm Desert built a longer channel here to catch some of that inconsistency or that, to try to address a larger footprint, just in case it came in a different spot. I'm finding the word for it right now, but nevertheless, Thousand Palms Channel will come into the existing flow, storm channels within Sun City and discharge down through the south channels. And then we have the Thousand Palms Channel, and I should, I'm going to skip the slides just real quick. So we have the Thousand Palms region, the Thousand Palms Flood Control Project, that will capture flows here and discharge into the existing Sun City Palm Desert Channel. We have the North Indio Flood Control Project that connects that channel, those channels with the existing Sun City Shadow Hills. And then we have the Thousand Palms Channel that is intended to final that leg and connect it to the existing Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel at this confluence. And that's what this, this project is here. Right now, this channel doesn't have the capacity to convey the 100-year flow. It requires improvements to an existing dike over here. And our plan here is to line the slopes and install a drop structure at the downstream end. And that's that project. This is the East Side Dyke Realignment Project. Some of the development has moved into the area. First of all, the dike was, as I mentioned before, built in 49. We've had a lot of sand, windblown sand, that has caused the downstream end of this to migrate portions of the downstream slope. We've had development push up against it and has precluded our ability to maintain the dike. So we're proposing to realign the dike slightly to shift it away from the development and, and to allow our maintenance folks to be able to maintain this, this dike going forward and make sure that it's able to perform its public function.
Is that, is that Terolago? What is that?
This is, this is Terolago. This is Four Seasons, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
At one time, I think this was called Dillon Lakes. All right. East Side Dyke Phase 2, this is the dike we were talking about earlier on the south side of Interstate 10. This was also built as part of the protective works for the Coachella Canal. The dike, again, we know provides a physical obstruction for flood hazards coming from the mountains, but FEMA does not recognize it as a flood control facility. And so the intent here is to get the dike aligned with FEMA standards so that we can make sure that the mapping in this area reflects reality and folks don't have to get flood insurance. And then the next set of priority projects is lining the rest of the channel down to Avenue 62 to the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel. We have the King's Road Regional Flood Control Project, which is out near Avenue 78. And this is intended to address some of the flooding that we experienced on September 1st. And then we have the Martinez Cannon, which is the same, which is out near Avenue 68, 70. This would include a retention basin, some levees, and some improvements to the storm channels in the area. And then we have Avenue 84, that was also came as part of the Oasis Regional Stormwater Master Plan. Again, a series of levees, retention basin, and improvements to the channels out in the area. We also took a look at the west shore of Salt and Sea. We came up with a master plan, and we will, this is, this is way down on the priority list, but at some point, we will develop a master plan for development in this area. And that's the end of the summary. Here is that the Stormwater Master Plan is estimated roughly about $1.2 billion in cost in 2015. The Stormwater CIP for this year... The Stormwater CIP for this year is 41 and a half million. The five-year we have is 104. And Rick from Finance will be coming in, I believe, in the next board meeting to give a presentation on potential funding options. But he did provide me with this bullet that I won't elaborate on, but a moderate funding approach includes issuing $93 million in debt bonds and includes $23 million in reserve, which leaves about $7 to $9 million annual to apply towards capital improvement projects after the current five-year. And that concludes the presentation.
You know, I grew up in South Palm Desert, so 1976, what a mess. I mean, we, you know, I was 11 years old and you're getting up in the middle of the night and trying to fill sandbags and, I mean, houses getting wiped out, pushed off their foundations, streets completely eroded. I mean, it was, it was bad. And the protective works that were built by CBWD were, you know, changed that whole community. Same thing in the Lakina Cove. I mean, it really, these projects are, you know, they really transform these areas. They're not really neighborhoods. They're bigger than neighborhoods. They're, they're areas of the valley where it makes home building or whatever is going to be there possible. I mean, they built those homes in South Palm Desert with no protection. And then they realized that was a mistake. It was really bad.
Are you going to put together a plan that, so we have a plan here at the district on doing all these projects and the funding for them?
Well, we have, we have a plan. We have a plan for developing the projects. We're working on a plan for funding. I think, I think the next go-around, we'll be talking about what options we have for funding and then how we develop and prioritize. We'll, we'll be in view of that.
And so the plan that you're, you're talking about, I'd like to see what the timetable would be. I mean, are we talking 50 years, 100 years? I mean, are we, because it seems like, unless we get on top of this, it will be 100 years. Like, I'm not exaggerating.
So the projects that we talked about, like the, the next set of priorities, those, the ones that David went through, those are in our five-year CIP. So there's, there's a little bit of a timetable there. So.
I think I'd just like to see you go out and everything that you've gone through.
Director Bianco, your mic, please.
Go through and put up your best guesstimate on funding, how we would get the funding over the next 20 years or whatever, or whatever, to a plan for all of these to be done.
Could, could we back up one slide, please?
It's going to be really long.
Yeah, but we should at least.
You know, that's seven to nine million per year. So, I mean, that's not going to give you a lot of capacity for new projects. What can we do to to make, to grow that on the revenue side?
It's going to be one of the people to raise the tax. I mean, that's really what it is.
And the people who vote are already protected, so they're probably not going to want to do it.
But I mean, we can look at, you know, opportunities when Rick comes back in, but we are constrained here. When you look at 1.25 billion, and we've got a five-year plan that basically consumes 104 million with a debt approach to fund that, leaving seven to nine million left. It's not hard to believe. It's going to take more than 50 years to get these projects done.
50 years would be, I think, wonderful. I don't think we're talking.
I said more than 50 years.
It's going to be like infinity.
Thank you for the optimism.
Yeah, so I mean, I think we are going to have to explore a voter-approved raise to that if we want to.
If we want to move forward with the projects.
If we want to move forward with the projects and if we want to protect the entire Coachella Valley.
I mean, in the, in the, in those seventies, right after that, there was the redevelopment organization available to the agencies. And so you could do a redevelopment fund, which would capture the incremental taxes and, and put that into a specific project. We don't have that anymore. So when I came in the late eighties, you know, the seventies issues were all, they were all done. I mean, they were, they bonded and got the incremental tax and they were done. And so now it's, it's a, it's very different dynamic because we don't have that tool available. We, the, I.
And you know how Riverside County is, is doing something creative where they're raising money for, for the Salt and Sea?
Enhanced infrastructure.
Enhanced infrastructure. So, so the new development would pay into, you know, this and would fund these projects and you would get money upfront. I mean, you guys know what it's about. I mean, maybe we need to look at something like that, too.
I mean, that, that EIFD, it's not in place yet, right? And they're still doing.
And it's not a special tax.
No, yeah, it's just part of the tax that you already pay, but it stays local instead of going somewhere else. But, but that one, it's not just Salt and Sea anymore. Now they, it's going to do a lot of things like roads and maybe water and sewer and who knows, electrical infrastructure or whatever.
What I was.
But it doesn't include this, as far as I know. I don't think there's any regional stormwater protection contemplated by the EIFD. I mean, maybe I'm wrong.
But as developments come into these areas and as they're required to comply with the regional stormwater requirements, they build some of, some of this infrastructure. Like, for example, North Indio, we did our Phase 1. Both developments on either side of Adam Street, Espanya and Damani, helped fund part of that Phase 1 project, so.
I know, but as, as costs are rising, that, that is going to be.
We're going to turn into IED.
Unrealistic for them to.
It's too big of a thing to swallow.
To put that burden on, on all of these developers.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to go back to your comments, Director Nelson. I think you mentioned something important was that it seems like generations before, you know, they did a lot in terms of stormwater. They did a lot of improvements. And I recall running into an old document back, you know, seven years ago when I was trying to understand the formation of the Stormwater District and its responsibilities and not really having a clear sense what the, what those agencies at that time built and how they built them and for what purpose. And so I recall running into, you know, as back as 1901, there was like the Indio, the Indio Libby District. And that was taken on by the larger district that then got put together, which you touched, was formed in like 1915, 1918. And then that got absorbed by Coachella Valley Water District. And then along that whole history, those different agencies were tackling stormwater issues. And, and you're right, levees, levees were formed even prior to, I think, the canal being built for the purposes of protecting agricultural lands. And so, you know, the dynamic has changed, you know? Now, now we're not, we're not what we used to be 80 years ago, you know? And so to me, it does appear like the district played a pretty important role in allowing for the, for the, for the valley to develop. The, the, the district played a pretty important role in, in putting in the infrastructure required for, for communities to, to be able to, you know, be created. And so I also don't like this idea where we just try to put the onus on developers because it, it won't get done. It, you know, we, we turn into IED. And I mean, that's the problem we're having with IED. So, so we do need to come up with a better strategy that I think probably needs to be twofold. Developers need to pay their fair share, but we also need to come up with our own financial mechanisms. And maybe that does include raising the tax. I, I don't think it's that hard. I, I mean, you look at, you look at what the College of the Desert has been able to do in the last 20 years. They, they bonded for over a billion dollars. They passed a bond in, what was it, like 2016? And then they passed another bond and it's become a billion dollars. And so I don't see why we couldn't.
I think it's doable, too.
Why we couldn't put a message out there that, you know, we haven't, doesn't seem like we've made big investments. I mean, we are, I mean, we're making big investments in the storm channel at the, at the airport.
The two projects that are ongoing right now are worth like 160 million. North Indio is 110, Thermal Jobs 54 million or 59 million. We've issued 60 million in debt. And we have like 50 million or 49 million in Wiffy loans that we have to pay back over 30 years for those two projects. So, I mean, I think we are trying to.
But you're trying.
Do our best and to, to continue, you know, with what history has done for the Coachella Valley with these stormwater projects. I think our point is that, you know, it takes a lot of time and a lot of money to do these very large projects. So when there's an opportunity to partner with a developer, say for instance, like with the North Indio project where developers, development is trying to develop a project and they need flood protection and we need regional flood protection, then those partnerships are effective to help move the projects along. I'm not saying to leave it on developers, by no means. Because right now, we're fully funding the two largest projects that we're working on. We did get a grant for the Eastside Dyke Phase 1 project from the, from FEMA, CALUES. So we are pursuing those opportunities as well. They're a little bit more, oh, I don't know, stringent with the requirements than say like the grants and loans we get from the State Water Board. But, you know, we are, we are looking at, at funding opportunities and, you know, trying to move the projects along. But Thousand Palms Flood Control, the Regional Flood Control Project, you know, that's over, another over $100 million type project. And like David said, there's a huge permitting aspect, 83 ephemeral streams, plus there's 500 acres of land that we have to acquire. So, but it's going to take a while.
It's, it's apparent. The, the Water District is doing a wonderful job of tackling these issues. But, but I have a feeling, well, I don't have a feeling, I know that we have reached our capacity of funds. I mean, we're using every available funds and we have plans to use all available funds that we need to start looking into these, these things, you know? And, and, you know, you talk about the developers paying their fair share. You know, a lot of those developments are high-end homes and they can afford to do that, you know? In, in other areas where we're trying to build low-cost housing and do things like that, those developers can't afford those funds for this flood control. And so I think it's something we need to, we've, we've been reluctant to look at anything that raises funds for a tax or to, to do, to go that way. But this, I mean, you know, we've been staring this in the face and that 1.25 billion is right now, is today's dollars.
Well, 2015.
$20.15.
It's 2015 dollars.
That's even worse. Yeah, it's a lot more.
So I mean, if we're talking, building these things even in 25 or 30 years, those numbers could double, triple, quadruple.
Yeah, no, no, no. I know.
How much do we, how much are we generating a year from the tax?
Like 11 to 12 million or?
We'll have that answer here in a minute.
And we're going to get that out our next meeting, right? I mean, that's, that's what Rick's going to present to us.
And we were just working last month with the county and the Burger Foundation to try and get a Department of Transportation monies to do Phase 1 of the Thousand Palms, where we're basically relocating Avenue 38 and taking the flows from the Classic Club over to Sun City. Unfortunately, that fell through, so. I mean, we are out there trying to do what we can.
But even if someone wanted to give us a billion dollars at less than 1% interest rate over the next 30 years, we couldn't afford it. We couldn't afford it. So we, we have to look other directions. If, if this is a priority of the board, and I think it, it is a priority of the board to get our hands around this.
Well, another thing we can do is, this is not the only property tax we get. We get the 1%, what we call discretionary property tax, which we spread across rates to avoid rate, rate increases. That money could be appropriated to the Stormwater Fund.
But that's like 15.
Yeah, I think it is more, I think it is 15. It's less than what we get from the Storm. Well, it's about the same what we get. Did you get a?
27.
27.
27 as well.
And what is, is that, what, is that a percentage on, on property value?
Yes, it's a valor.
I just wonder.
A little preview of our next presentation.
Yeah, so, so assess valuation for this tax year just went up 8.8%. And so that brings us to 27 million for the Stormwater Fund, but that's just part of the 1% tax. That's not an additional tax on, on top of that. And, and so on the, the note on the slide, so if we maxed out that revenue stream above what we have in the five-year CIP, we can fund an additional 117 million in projects between the debt and a little bit of reserve use. So that's our max funding capacity. It's another 117 million of the 1.25 billion-plus inflation number, unless we get another revenue stream. Either from, let's say, looking at the additional increase in AV on our other property taxes and redirecting that here. So you kind of freeze what all the other funds are getting right now and redirecting, lowering that and redirecting moreover, which would be rate increases in the other, other funds, which is another way of looking at a tax or getting a special tax approved by the voters. So those are really your three main options. And we'll put together some analysis.
So the stormwater is not a special tax? I thought this is our stormwater. It is.
Yeah, it was incorporated into the 1%. It was originally a special tax. And then when Prop 13 came, it just became part of the 1%. So it's not on top of any other tax.
Hey Rick, when you come back to us with your plan, it's, it's going to be designed to show how we leverage that 93 million, right? If there'll be other funding involved that could show a more sizable project plan than just, or is it just all 100% 93 million will fund X as opposed to 93 million leveraged with other monies will fund more?
So, so it's, it's 93 million total. There, there's very few options other than FEMA, FEMA funding for leveraging any other outside money, other than a few things that we talked about here. And that FEMA money is highly uncertain. We're looking at one option for the North Cathedral, Cathedral City Project right now. And so we'll be moving forward with that because there seems to be an opportunity. It's far from certain. But there's not much on stormwater. That's the trouble, unlike other funding sources. Usually the needs are so large, federal agencies, other than FEMA. And so that, that's the one that we're pursuing and we're looking into. But prioritization is a different question. You sort of have 117 million and then you decide which projects on top of what's already planned to direct that to.
You know, just, just from my own perspective, we went quite a while without doing real projects in stormwater. We were building these reserves. And, you know, I think the, the board decided, and I think staff also agreed that, you know, let's spend this money. But we got a little lucky because the interest rates were so low when we went out and, you know, got this debt. So we were able to leverage it really well. That's not going to be happening anytime soon, probably, with the rates much higher now. But, but, you know, big difference today compared to where we were 20 years ago. And I appreciate that. You guys have done a good job. With, you know, with what we're able to do, we're doing it. And then we want to be able to do more.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Victoria.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. Actually, due to some technical difficulties that I've been going through and considering the agenda, we would like to continue this until the next month's meeting, if that's possible. Cyrus was unable to connect and his audio wasn't working.
No arguing for me.
Yeah, no problem. But I did want to mention, Victoria.
Yes, please.
That, so, that when John Corella was here and doing a presentation talking about Cathedral City, he mentioned that we were having some problems getting feedback on federal and state disaster declarations. And to the extent that we can get all our folks in DC and Sacramento to help inquire about that, I'd like to get some feedback on that at some point.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely include it. We'll most likely move this item to consent and have a more thorough, excuse me, written report. So I can make sure to include that within the written report.
Thank you.
Additionally, though, I will say President Biden did declare a state of emergency for this area but for the Agua Caliente Tribe of Keweeah Indians. But I know that both our state and federal advocates are still continuing to monitor.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So you're trying to say wins, loses or wins, losses? Lo- losses, right? Two S's instead of one?
I'm pretty sure human losses. I will totally, uh...
Do you winners and losers?
I don't know. I'll say, I'll follow my sword for that one, though. Thank you.
It, it works either way. Thank you. Board General comments, Director Nelson.
Uh, no comment.
Aguilar.
No.
I'll be brief, as brief as I can and I'll save it more for next time. But I, I did want to just say that I had a quick conversation with President Powell about, um, two things that I wanted to put, uh, before the, the board just for thoughts. And one, one is that Supervisor's Office reached out and they were just kind of throwing out the idea of a potential partnership for like a signing ceremony for the Lake Keweeah Fifty-Year Agreement. There, there's been a lot of noise out in the community about wanting both agencies to come up with some sort of agreement, some sort of plan. And so I think that's something that, um, both of us and I imagine the board here also would want to showcase that we've been, uh, we've been able to do that. And then the other one is, um, you, you know, that there was a lot of ARPA money provided by the county to help us, uh, re- rehab the, uh, one of the plants, one of the well, one of the well plants out in Mecca that is removing arsenic in an effort to increase supply to that area, understanding that there's, um, some affordable housing projects that, that are being worked on. And so I think the county has provided at least maybe ten million dollars to that, uh, project, maybe close to that. Uh, and so one of the asks from, uh, the Supervisor's Office, when I think we went back and said, hey, can we have an additional two million? Because the bids came in higher, they were able to facilitate that. I think that was approved by their board, uh, last week. And so they just kind of reminded, um, reminded me or reminding us that one of the things they wanted to do was also work on some sort of joint press release, groundbreaking, um, whatever, um, we want to call it. But it's also one thing that they want to put out to the community that these dollars are going to try to, um, help out the affordable housing projects out there in the region. So I'll bring back more when I hear more, but I just wanted to let the board know.
And I think staff is also working on a groundbreaking for the Avenue Sixty-Six. Is that correct? Anything else we're working on while we've got the opportunity?
Safer Committee Tour.
Yes, on December seventh.
December seventh.
And that, and the Avenue Sixty-Six is probably not something that's gonna happen still until like January, February.
Yeah.
So we're not, that's not, that's not something that, uh, is really active right now, right? It's kind of, it's just kind of in the radar. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so maybe one item that potentially could come up, uh, in the future, it's still kind of in the works. This Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands Coalition, uh, is having some issues with the board putting all these requirements in but not enforcing them.
The Regional Board, sir, not the CVW.
The Regional Water Quality Control Board, yes, sorry. You're right. And, and the State Water Board really is driving it. That, uh, I think it's being done in other districts where they're, uh, the, the Water District or the Irrigation District's taking this responsibility and then just bills out the customers. And that kind of gets everybody in the tent. Don't know if that would happen or not. We, we've kind of been, SeaVilk has been communicating with the Regional Board saying, you know, we're, we're losing members, we're losing acreage. It's getting really hard to do all the things you keep heaping on us without a source of revenue. And, uh, they're not being very cooperative. Imagine that. So, uh, we're still working that, those channels, see if we make any progress. But, um, you know, I may research what other water districts or irrigation districts are doing to address those kind of issues more globally rather than have it... Because right now it's a voluntary membership.
Correct.
You would think, you know, people would want coverage, but there's probably twenty thousand irrigated acres that aren't even in it. So it's a problem. To be continued.
I, I mean, I think maybe the only way we could figure out how the district could be involved is to look at the runoff as a... The problem is once the water is applied on a private property, the district has no more ownership of that.
No, and, and, no, and I'm not suggesting you do. I mean, I think there was originally, yeah, originally the district drains were part of the, the program and now they're not. So, um, I know the district itself, its own operations are not included. But there's still, I think, some kind of a nexus there.
We can look at that.
Yeah. I mean, Zoe's been very positive.
You have to do something because, you know, it's, it's, it's not working.
It's not working, yeah.
I mean, you've got, you know, twenty thousand acres of people that aren't paying, so...
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I went and made comments to the Regional Board and said that they should, you know, do their diligence and enforcement. So when you look at the central, uh, the Central Valley's Regional Board, they went out and started, uh, sending notifications to growers. And, uh, and after the notifications, they ordered an appearance before the board. Some of those were ignored and the fines ranged, they actually fined the growers, anywhere from eight thousand dollars up to a hundred thousand dollars. And that's the kind of thing that gets the attention of growers to say, hey, you know, that's big money. I, I can't, you know, I need to participate in this state program. And so, uh, that's what, that needs to happen in my mind is the Regional Board just needs to, you know, do the enforcement.
But what the problem is, is people have been paying into this for how many years? And some people haven't been paying anything. And so you get people to start paying, but what happens to, what happens to the people that have been paying?
Well, our, our membership requires them to go back and make, make all of the back payments.
We, we will see. Yeah, I, I have a feeling that that's not gonna happen.
If they don't do it, then they have to start their own. I mean, these are all voluntary.
And I'll, I'll join theirs if it's a good...
Yeah, it's a better deal. Anyways, it's a problem. And, and so SeaVilk is working to, to try to convince the Regional Board that they have a role here. And it's gonna be hard for us if they don't do their role anyways.
We, we can probably make a visit to the Regional Board and explain that there is a concern and a frustration and, you know, whether they see, uh, an avenue for us to participate in or whether, you know, we can somehow, I don't know, encourage them to begin at least notifications, uh, if not actual enforcement actions. You know, we're still developing our relationship with the Regional Board under our new Environmental Services Department head.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I know we've, I know Joanne's been, been down there to do the meet and greet and, um, you know, this may be a...
I think we have a decent relationship, but it always seems to go back up to the state and say, well, our hands are tied. The state requires us to do it this way. And, and so it's like they don't have any power, which I think they do have power.
I believe they do as well.
Yeah.
It's a dodge.
Anyways, so that's all happening.
Or Ford.
Yeah. Okay, that's my mini-report there. Onto, uh, board requests for future agenda items. I mean, I guess we have the, um, air gap question, we've already got that covered.
Irrigation regulations.
Uh, on the irrigation regulations.
Then we have the financing for Stormwater.
Yeah.
And we, we do want to look at what it would take. I mean, what are we looking at when we put something on the ballot? Is there something you can get on? Is it, is it next year? Can, is it that soon you can do it or are we talking three years?
Well, without a special election.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that can be part of the analysis with my partner to work with, Rick, to come up with what the thresholds are.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you look at what COD did. I think that's a good example.
Yeah, look at COD and then give us a sense of what we would need to increase it by to get to a certain number.
And I'm sure that's variable, but it's gonna depend on the target of what projects we want to fund when.
Yeah, I mean, the state water project tax that we have generates over sixty million dollars a, a year for that. That's what, twelve cents?
I think you gotta look at all of them, all the projects.
I mean, so if you look at all the projects and say, well, what, four cents to that or what? I mean, there's, there's a calculus there.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
A range of alternatives, right, Rick? All right, onto, uh, board meeting reports. October fourth, Aqua.
So I, uh, I attended an Aqua Region Four tour of banks, which, uh, takes water, um, off the river and into the, uh, state and federal, uh, water project. It was a very interesting tour and, uh, had a tour of the fish screens, what they're doing there as well. It was, uh, good to see.
Great, um, October tenth.
I'll keep going.
Yeah, QSA.
And then on October tenth, uh, I did miss the, uh, CVWD, uh, regular board meeting as well as, uh, Director Estrada. It was a good evening, night, good panels. Steve Abbott was on one of the QSA panels. Tom Levy was on a panel. Uh, kind of a buck down memory lane, uh, so to speak. And, uh, good networking opportunities. Don Ortega was there. Costello and I talked with him. And, um, uh, overall, there were probably about seventy-five people there, uh, with the panels. It was, it was very good.
Great. And then the next day?
Uh, next day was a call, uh, a dedication to Lloyd Allen Water Conservation Operational Reservoir, uh, which, uh, was pretty good. It's about a, oh, gosh, um, twenty-four, no, bigger than that. It was like a hundred, a hundred acre foot reservoir, uh, regulatory reservoir to store water, uh, when it rains and for operational issues. Uh, and then the Colorado River Board Meeting was, um, uh, just after that. Good meeting, uh, kind of set a direction for the Colorado River Board Meeting at Crua to be a little bit different, uh, than in years past in terms of trying to, um, really expound on California's, uh, efficient and good water management and its ability to, um, take, uh, less Colorado River water than, than is normal. You know, both, uh, from IID's perspective, Coachella's perspective and Met's perspective. We're gonna be down in twenty-twenty-three to three point seven million acre feet of diversions off the Colorado. And, um, so to talk about different recycling projects, uh, storage projects, management projects, conservation projects and, and, and possibly bring in some high-level, um, political people like state senators or what have you and, um, uh, have a real positive message about what's going on in California. So that, that was kind of the main emphasis of the, of the meeting there.
Yeah, I thought that that, there was some letter or press release that the Biden Administration put out about the Colorado River and, you know, post-two thousand twenty-six and didn't sound like it really meshed very well with what, um, California is saying.
I mean, California is saying we, we, you know, we're willing to conserve water, but we need flexibility, we need, uh, uh, we need, you know, storage. And we need, if we're gonna conserve, we need, you know, funding for conservation projects. I mean, that's kind of the story that we're...
And, and that we still value the existing agreements and the law of the river.
Number one.
Yeah, because I didn't see that in Biden's, in the Biden Administration's press release. It's kind of scary.
Yeah.
You know, just on Lloyd Allen, I, I remember Lloyd Allen twenty-five years ago. And this guy was sharp, you know, but you'd see him and he'd show up at everything, you know, no matter where you were, Halls of Congress, Department of Interior, whatever. And he'd always have these, you know, well-worn Levi's or some kind of jeans. Maybe they're Wrangler's, who knows? And cowboy boots. And his jeans were longer than his legs. So he'd step on the, the, you know, the hem of the jeans and they were, they were always like frayed. And so he had this like train of frayed jeans behind him as he walked. I still remember that. Oh, like, who, first time I met him, I'm like, who is this guy? But after a while, you're like, oh, you gotta respect him, you know? He was, he was a good advocate for IID.
Sure was.
Fashion trend that just never took off.
I was in there for that, Sylvia, on the eleventh.
Okay.
Came back after the QSA thing.
Okay. October sixteenth, DBBA, uh, we had our regular board meeting. It was, uh, I'd say nothing too unusual, but I was there. October nineteenth, Salt and Sea Authority, Directors Aguilar and Estrada.
I actually did not attend.
Yeah, I was there. We had a regular business. There was a presentation that we had by, uh, someone from that Boundary Committee with, what is that called? The International Boundary Committee. And they had a, just some updates on the river. And then, um, right after that, there, there was a, what they were calling a milestone celebration for getting some of the geotech work that's gonna be happening out in the Salt Sea as it relates to the North Lake Demonstration Project. That's, they're gonna start doing some of the boring, some of the soil testing out there up until December. So there, as you know, DUDEC was the consultant that, um, received the award for, uh, design of that, that project. And so there was a big check presentation, the almost twenty million dollar, uh, funds that were received through Prop sixty-eight. And so there was a series of speakers. Assembly Member Garcia spoke, Supervisor I spoke, Patrick spoke and Samantha, who's now the new Assistant Secretary for Salt Sea Policy, that big title.
I was wondering who that was.
Um, and so that's Samantha. She replaced Arturo Delgado.
She's with DWR, right?
She's with, uh, Natural Resources.
Oh, Natural, yeah.
Yeah, she reports to Wade, Croft, Secretary Wade Croft. And so, um, there was also, uh, she did, they, they, the state spoke very highly of CVWD. It sounds like they're getting everything that they need from staff, specifically Zoe's. So that, that was really nice to hear that. Um, and, uh, I think the big question still out there is the water supply. And so they, they are continuing to do an analysis on pumping some of that water out from that, uh, what, what do we call that basin out there? The chocolate basin or the...
Uh, it is the...
That one out there.
Akko, Akio, Akko.
It has...
Orocopia.
Orocopia, yes. So I think that's still kind of the, some of the proposal there. But anyways, went well and, uh, people are happy. That's it.
Uh, California Farm Water Coalition.
Uh, that meeting was, uh, postponed till October thirtieth, so I'll, I'll report next week. So it's next Monday.
Yeah, okay.
And as an additional meeting, on October third, we had a Section Five Contractors, uh, call with, uh, all the Californian entities on it, discussing the seven basin states discussions.
Good. You used to be on those calls as a representative of the CRB, right? But now you're on those calls as a representative of CDWD?
I'm hanging out with Robert on that one, yeah.
Good, good, good. Well, stay in there. It's great. Any other meetings we need to report on?
Yes, Mr. President, I had a meeting on October thirteenth. I met with, uh, some folks by the name of Global Water Farms and I had met these folks, I don't know, two years ago. They were looking for some help in trying to do a pilot, uh, some sort of pilot program in the same basin, the, uh, what would you call it again?
Orocopia.
Orocopia basin, uh, because it's a low priority. So I don't think they, they ran into any restrictions from the state. It sounds like they finally got that pilot project approved by the county. It is within the County of Riverside. And so they wanted to chat about, um, potential water supplies. At first it sounded like they wanted to be nice and give it away. And then it very quickly turned into they're trying to sell water. So conversation didn't last very long. I said, we, we already tried to sell the Salt and Sea some of our water and it was too expensive. So I don't think it's gonna be a go. So anyways, that's, they're out here. They, uh, it looks like they're, with the pilot, uh, test that they have out there, they're producing roughly a hundred acre feet of water.
A day?
Uh, no, believe, a year.
Oh, okay.
A year, so it's like very small.
Well, don't you need two thousand?
I told them, I said, well...
And what's the quality? Is that salty water?
Uh, I, no, I think, I think the reason it's so high and I told them that... Uh, I, no, I think, I think the reason it's so high, and I told them it just doesn't seem like it for what we need it for. They're, I think they're turning it into like drinking water. So I was like, we don't need drinking water at the Salt Sea.
Yeah.
Right? So, um, anyways, they're around, uh, they have an office here. That's it.
Good. Uh, any other meetings we need to report on? Um, is there a motion approved per diem for the meetings reported?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed by though. General Manager report.
Yes, sir. A couple of calendar items. Uh, last Monday, the 16th, I listened in to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal, uh, hearing on the Ranstrom Raj Mobile Home Park complaint. Um, I don't know, uh, I couldn't tell from the questions. Some folks are more used to that than I am on how the three panel judges will vote. Um, but, uh, at least, uh, we have gotten through that knot hole and we're waiting for the outcome. Uh, we were going to, uh, present to the Cathedral City City Council, uh, tomorrow night on, uh, our stormwater plan for that area, uh, along with the county, uh, who would provide a more, uh, detailed recap of what happened during Hillary. But that's been moved to 11:29, uh, November 29th, uh, which just happens to be the same night as BBNK's, uh, dinner at, uh, Wally's Turtle, uh, which I've never been to. I've seen the sign.
Who's going today?
You've never been there.
I have never been there. Would you recommend going?
I might go. Just so I can hang out with Jeff for a while.
Exactly. It's not just for the food, it's for the company.
So that's 11:29.
Did you make up anybody else?
Uh, I'll be at the Cathedral City.
I'll be at Aqua, so.
Yeah. I mean, well, after the Cathedral City meeting.
Well, this is part of Aqua.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's part of Aqua, but BBK's hosting a dinner.
I think I sent a memo to them.
Yeah. We've, yeah. 29th, that's a Sunday? Yeah, cause that right?
No, it's, it should be a Wednesday. 11:29.
Oh, November 29th.
Yeah. Uh, but, uh, although we're not going to Cathedral City, uh, City Council this evening, there is a, uh, Councilmember Perez has an open house, uh, Wednesday, uh, starting at 17:30 at his new offices in Old Town, La Quinta. Supervisor, what did I say?
She said council member.
Oh, so.
He used to be a council member.
Uh, yeah, he was.
And there is a person.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there you go. But no, I was speaking about the supervisor.
But they wouldn't have an office in La Quinta.
No. Um, I have a call with, uh, Metropolitan and the other, uh, general managers or representatives of the section five contractors on, um, Monday, uh, October 30th. I'm not quite sure what we're going to be talking about, but Adele has summoned us all together. So I thought I'd give him a couple of minutes to explain what it is he wants to do. On the 8th of November in San Diego, uh, the San Diego County Water Authority is going to have their celebration of the QSA. Uh, I will be going to that, but I'll be taking Thursday off and Fridays and RDO. So that's, I've got a couple of things done while I'm there. Get my teeth checked. Um, we have Congressman Calvert coming in on November 1st, uh, for a visit and a tour of the area. And I think, uh, staff has got that pretty well wired. The only, the last thing, that's all on the calendar. The last thing I was going to talk about is, uh, something that, um, did come up during today's meeting, uh, where we were not able to connect with Cyrus. Um, we seem to be having, uh, recurring, uh, problems with our Zoom, uh, broadcast. Um, a number of, uh, agencies and cities have stopped using Zoom, uh, because of the inability to control, uh, comments, um, and requiring people to come in, uh, to the actual, uh, spaces to make comments. Um, I, I would like the board to consider allowing us to also, uh, eliminate the use of Zoom, uh, unless there is some special occasion that would require it. It, it just doesn't seem that we get a lot of participation, um, from the public through the Zoom channel and, you know, just ease and facilitation of, of moving through this rather quickly rather than having to wait. You know, if we do need it, hopefully we'll remember how to use it. Um, but, uh, I'd, I'd like the board to consider that.
I'm going for that. I agree with you.
We would still, um, have the streaming capability. So we would still be streaming, um, to YouTube and so forth or Vimeo. We had some issues. So we'll, we'll determine what streaming platform we'll use. And the Zoom, as Jim mentioned, we could utilize that when needed, when we have a consultant online specifically, but.
Or a board member.
Or a board member. Exactly.
So what happened today? What happened today?
So Zoom was down. We had, um, issues with Zoom all morning. Our consultant, Cyrus, one of the reasons why it was continued is because he couldn't stay on. It kept dropping him, the feed and other members that were joining just. And Zoom is out of our control. There's nothing that we can do to fix that.
So it's therein, not our.
It's therein, not us internally. Um, and then as Jim mentioned, other agencies across the state have looked at, um, doing away with Zoom, but their reasons are different. It's just more of the, um, just very ugly comments during public comments. A lot of cities, school boards, um, have been receiving hate comments, things of that nature, just very ugly comments. Um, so they've decided to just eliminate Zoom altogether and force the public to come in or provide written comments.
Seems there's a type of personality that feels very comfortable sitting at home and using very, um, aggressive.
Yes.
No, I, I totally.
They cut me those.
I'll, I'll agree with the, uh, unreliability too. I've had other, with other groups I work with, very bad, difficult times trying to get on the, you know, you spend 10, 15 minutes trying to log in and you don't get in. It's ridiculous.
Jim, uh, regarding the visit from the congressman, is he, is, is it, he's stopping at various spots and then he's stopping at CVWD? And the reason I'm asking is I'd like to know what, what involves CVWD and, and I'd like to be there. So I'd like to know the schedule.
I think we have one board member attending already.
I think I am planning to be here at one.
There's a room for a second one.
Yes.
I understand that.
Good morning. Um, so what we've been informed, so everything's quite fluid as it relates to the congressman's visit. Um, and so we are, we've been informed right now because of the speaker situation that's happening and because of the continuing resolution expiring November 17th, that they might just work through their recess. So although we have scheduled November 1st at 1:30, we've been told that it might just be canceled regardless. Additionally, we were told that it was moved from like, like a half day tour to now just to a one hour slot. And we are still working with his scheduler to try to get a more formal tour. Um, Congressman Calvert has toured some of the, um, like desert water agencies and some of the other agencies in the West. And so we want to make sure that he has the ability to do that here.
Yeah.
But if we were to have this one hour, we would keep it at the Palm Desert facility, um, and kind of just go through, uh, some of our needs. And I think the opportunity to talk to him about funding at that time as well.
Yeah. Stormwater might be one of the things to put on the list there.
It's only a billion.
Yeah. But it remains quite fluid, unfortunately.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're engaging him. I think, I think he, um, is capable of doing a lot. And so I'm happy to hear that he's interested in.
I would, I would push for more than just the hour. And if, and if he can only out for an hour in the next couple of weeks, then I would say postpone it to where he can get some more time.
I mean, obviously their scheduling is a disaster right now because of the.
Yeah. It's, it's been quite tough. I mean, if we're able to get him out even a couple of times, I'll, I'll take the multiple touch points, quite frankly, opposed to just trying to, I mean, but.
Yeah. We can use that to whet his appetite and bite him back maybe.
Yeah, certainly.
When he has more time.
Jim, I'd like to request, if, if you would mind, a meeting with you and Carrie and maybe David and Scott before the city council meeting in Cathedral City, so we can discuss the presentation content because there are, as Scott knows, there are lots of families who have major issues that, uh, have come up and I would like to be more prepared to respond to those questions. All right, sir. We'll get on that. We've got a month to get that together. I think it's possible.
Good. Council comments.
So for board members to attend a meeting virtually, there's the old rules reposted at the place.